Ready and Tony.
Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, September seventeenth. It's the meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission. We'll get with the roll call.
Commissioner Slade.
I'm here.
Commissioner Cole.
Present.
Commissioner Hickman.
Here.
And Commissioner R S Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner R F Johnson is absent.
Uh, next we're on to approval of the minutes. I see that the June eighteenth ones were continued from last meeting due to lack of quorum. And but I did note that, well, you had the 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 vote tally. You've caught that as well was missing.
I think Richard found that.
Richard do, okay. Was there anything else that we also want to think on this one? You've got that Anton, the vote tally, right? Okay, cool.
Yeah. I didn't edit the minutes, but yeah, when we do the approval.
Any other changes from the June eighteenth one? Move to approve.
Thanks.
All those same say hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Pose. Alright, Dan. Kind of slay or standing, yes, due to being absent, so perfect. The August twentieth minutes, did you guys handle those? No, those are in here and I have to stand. That's it. Uh, we do not have. We got two out of the three people that were here. So yeah, we can proceed with this one. Right? Or do we need all three?
Yeah, because it's not a quorum of those present. It's a quorum of everybody.
Yeah. So defer this one. Okay, alright, we'll continue the August.
If anybody has some comments, edits, though, we can take.
So we can't prove them at this meeting? You know, five?
You need three. You need all three. You need three of five to take a vote.
Just read it where they're. I got.
Three over there.
Being dense.
Richard damn us up here, buddy. Any changes from anybody? The few that were here, the two, the two that were here?
I didn't see anything.
You don't find them yet. You've got until next month.
No, I looked.
By again.
Yeah, you've they're good.
I've got I've got a note in here about uh, the approval of those previous minutes being postponed due to a lack of forum of commissioners and I guess there's some ongoing confusion about that. Is it a form of voting commissioners or a core commissioner presence?
Yeah, so it's not a a quorum to vote um, to take an action for the planning commission requires. Um, and the vote could be two to three or two to one um, would be a, you know, passing vote. So we we need a minimum of three. But if you don't have three present to vote on the minutes, you can't vote on the minutes.
That participated in the meeting that the minutes are about, right? Yeah. Because otherwise, how can they say what? Speak the accuracy, right? That makes sense.
So but so are you saying this just needs to be
I would just, I guess.
Rewarded.
Yeah, I would just say uh, as the second to us, we're there at the June meeting.
At the June meeting. Yeah, okay. Form of presence at the June. Yeah. Otherwise, it sounds like there wasn't a forum for.
At this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Move on then to approval of tonight's agenda. We have one item only. Any changes? Anybody here would like to see page of the agenda? Seeing any and there's nobody present online and there's nobody with us in the room, a motion to approve the agenda? Between by affirmation.
Or whatever.
Yes. Awesome. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, passes unanimously. Item from the floor. Again, there's nobody on the floor. There's nobody in the virtual floor, so we'll go through.
I've got I've got an item from the floor, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
And this is uh, it's related to parking and there's a somewhat new version of the California Vehicle Code, which says uh, and paraphrasing, I believe, that no vehicles are permitted to park within twenty feet of the vehicle approach side of any marked or unmarked crosswalk. Where an unmarked crosswalk crosswalk is by definition, any intersection where there is no stop sign or traffic signal controlling the intersection. And so there's quite a few intersections in town where I think that this isn't being turns out that it can be enforced whether the curb is painted red or not. Um, I'm sorry, most personally affected by the intersection of Parker and Trinity Street, where especially in the morning, there's traffic through the school. But being able to see that traffic requires pulling out into traffic. And so I don't know that this is totally a planning commission. I don't necessarily, but I know that there is, you know, a circulation element to discuss. I know there's always discussions of of parking, including the parking survey results. And uh, I'd like to see at least some acknowledgement of someone in the city that there's there's some issues where there are not twenty feet of no parking zones on either side of various cross crosswalks in town.
If public work, public works issue, Trevor?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 inconsistency of red curbs was definitely something that came up in the parking study. And not just, I mean, it was it was at driveways, it was at intersections, it was um. And so one of the recommendations is to do a red curb inventory and kind of take a look at should should the city have some standards about that? Um, because I think in some areas, there's too much red curb, you know, and you could take just two feet off and get an extra parking spot. And then there's some areas where where red curb is is necessary. Um. Yeah, I think it's it's gotten a little bit more complicated now that the postal commission is saying, anytime we can't red curb, we need a CDP.
Yeah, it shouldn't be terribly difficult to get a CDP group that brings the city into to a state law.
And I, you know, there's, you know, another finding is that there are a lot of encroachments in so the city could also be like, hey, we're gonna paint these red curves and we're gonna lose five spaces, but we're gonna get these five spaces back by making people cut back their vegetation.
Boulders.
Isn't this something that they probably want to get like official measurements and things that would be required of the city engineer? Really?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think it would need to be the city engineer that would evaluate that. I think right now I don't know what, you know, criteria public work chooses to paint red curves.
Why would the city staff want to be responsible for getting it right?
I think so.
Yeah.
That's a question that's really been asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't. I I mean, I I no, we get too much discussion, but I would think Gabe would be a great starting point on this, the city manager, the interim city manager and seeing it state law should be pretty straightforward, I would think.
Yeah, right. So that's that's one approach for sure. I just wanted to sort of on our radar as well, so we're having upcoming discussions about circulation, parking. But you're right, that is perhaps the most logical first step.
But I I mean, it is a planning issue, so. They all be kept in loop.
Alright, then with that, we are on to agenda item number one. Trevor, take it away.
Great, so uh we had been working on the safety element for a while, but I had not been including the um, emergency response section one, because I didn't necessarily have updated background information, but also because it was not um, part of, it's not going to be part of the local coastal program, so not paid for by the grant and it's not something get to the coastal commission. So um. But I thought it would be good to continue to work on that. And then the noise element often goes along with the safety element and we did talk about that a few years ago. It's also probably not part of the LCP. Um, but I just, I made some edits that we discussed at the last meeting. But before going out and trying to get some new noise readings, I just thought I talked to you guys about uh, you know, I know things like pickleball have come up and some other noise issues, so I just thought I'd make sure um got the understanding of what the current noise issue. Let's see. And then I did also look at some other noise elements and habits and policies. Oh, and I, yeah, I tried to, one of the comments was it was a little too technical, so I tried to kind of summarize. Take out. I think that's still the definition, but.
Alright, then uh, listed objections, I'd suggest we just kind of go through page by page. It's not a whole lot of pages. It's packed it.
Yeah, I know some bigger picture stuff. Maybe it's uh, we might consider discussing before we go page by page. All this is really rooted in the fact that um, I don't love the fact that the pickleball court would shut down uh, for noise related issues when um, you know, I pulled a few other, like I had chat, should we pull some other uh noise elements from around coastal California? And uh, I think that if we sort of re-categorize for the sake of context and compatibility, some of the noise sources, because we're distinguished between community noise sources, which are acceptable versus potentially potential nuisance. So what I've done is I've written, I'll just pass these down. Now, I might opt to re-categorize uh, some of these categories of noise just based on their source. Because, you know, there's also some inherent uh, I don't know, redundancy in existing conditions. So I think the city, I'm sort of get apart stationary sources, this is transportation, this is atmospheric environmental uh, sources of noise. Where community sources, including things like schools and recreation are, you know, as uh, as some elements say, uh, reasonable and expected parts of community life. And in some municipalities, they're actually exempt from daytime nuisance um. Activities. And then that leaves things like commercial industrial operations and construction in the commercial and industrial category. Those are, again, potential nuisances. Then under transportation, you know, automobile traffic, including personal vehicle traffic, including personal vehicle traffic, uh, you know, belonging to tourists and commercial traffic and other traffic, including aircraft traffic, traffic are again. One of the things that I don't love about um, the elements as it's written is sort of othering of tourists. Right? I think that there is some noise produced by tourists. I would say the vast majority of that is probably produced by their personal vehicles. I don't like that there's sort of a gatekeepy approach to the to classifying tourists as something other than sort of community noise and uh things aren't really unreasonable or out of character with community life in any coastal town. So those are my, those are my big picture ideas and I don't need to force them upon you, but I thought that would be worth considering as we distinguish between community versus other sources of noise.
Are you saying that basically you think about tourists that they're really no different than residents? I mean, should they be looked at differently? Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, I I mean, they are in the current, in the current text, there's, you know, they're explicitly listed in various places as being noise sources. Like at the bottom of packet page twelve, for example, turn out some substantial network contributes to ambient noise levels. Noise can also come from private residences, tourists and so on and so forth, where I guess it was originally tourist activities. And I mean, that's true, but I'm thinking about Underwood Drive and the vast majority of tourists that I encounter, even the residents are just like families who are, you know, renting some STR and are just out for casualist roles. The really truly noisy part of tourist visitation is all the personal vehicles that come to town. So I think that tourist noise is perhaps better reclassified as vehicle noise. And sort of singling out individual tourists who are not sort of as individual entities and as persons unusually noisy compared to your average residence.
I guess people might say, well, loud parties from tourists, but then anybody.
Resident, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, there's there's like tourists are more likely to have parties, but residents would certainly have parties. But then, you know, it we I think we often hear complaints about people or person that could be residents.
I mean, like in my day to day life, certainly the sort of noisiest outside goes comes from the school. Usually gleeful, happy screaming children, sometimes bells ringing. Right now, of course, there's like a volleyball game going on, so there's screaming across the street right now. But that's you know, that's not unreasonable or out of character with community life. And I think really the my biggest point here is for distinguishing noises which are perfectly acceptable, like for example, tennis court noise or pickleball noise, noise that comes from public enjoyment of public facilities from what's more avoidable. Some other language that said, um, you know, maybe maybe exemptions for quote activities conducted on the grounds of any public facility during regular hours of operation.
There we go. Here on page.
Yeah, I'm not opposing any uh, insertions anywhere in particular, but more of a sort of broad re categorization.
I mean, it strikes me a a lot, well, you're specific like the pickleball issue like that. Some of these things could be better hashed out in a noise ordinance. Like between whatever hours community activities, which is this catchall basket of all the things listed, you know? Some of those are nicer than others.
Yeah, a lot of them are exempt from daytime nuisance standards. I think that's um, you know, somebody's like ambience, it was an L max, which is the LBN. Right? These are twenty four hour averages. And if you look at the looking at the table it will end three, right? That compatibility matrix. Those are weighted, right? Which is to say, if I feel like in this like outdoor sports and recreation facilities are normally acceptable up to sixty five decibels and, you know, conditionally acceptable up to eighty and correct me if I'm wrong, but those are averages over twenty four hours. So there'll be some exceptionally noisy periods and there will be some exceptionally quiet periods where theoretically up to yeah, those of LBN are acceptable.
But if you start getting into these are criteria based on an average all day, um, to ever.
Right.
And you.
Oh, we.
Remember that made sense.
Well, that is, that is pretty same, that is becoming more the norm and you have to set up your really expensive noise meter and you have to set it up and you run it for twenty four hours.
You probably needed an average day on an average day of the year.
Yeah, no, I it noise and a noise ordinance is it's difficult. I know it comes up occasionally at the city. Um, the city has not adopted one yet. Um, but it is, you know, it's tough, you know, I think quiet hours are a good kind of way to go. Um. But, you know, barking dogs can be annoying during the day.
Can you distinguish a windy day from not on your meter? You got natural sounds or the surface up big and
Oh, that that absolutely.
Disbelts just, you know, from that.
Yeah.
I think the whole thing is they're trying to make something scientific and in uh and mathematical and I think the reality is there. It's it's gonna end up being judgmental no matter what you do.
We know, I'll also add really quickly um, to that point that, you know, this particular figure as uh, it's written, it came from Santa Cruz. Noise elements, but it's very closely, it very closely resembles, though it's not identical to a CEQA threshold guide.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is a pretty standard.
Uh, which I'll say, these numbers aren't arbitrary, right? These are, these are published values that are used in various.
Right, right. But I mean, actually taking that hard, you know, set of rules and criteria and then applying them to a real situation. I mean, if nobody's objecting, if you don't have somebody saying it's too noisy, it
It would definitely, I mean, it would be complaint driven. Um, you know, these things usually come up uh, more as you know, industrial uses. Rotten and um, the other thing that these come up as as is if you have a new housing project next to one of these noise sources, you have to insulate the housing to me that forty five decibel interior, considering these exterior numbers.
Have you encountered any noise elements to talk about? You talk about change in intensity triggering development, right? Being so, you know, an argument we made that transitioning from, say, for example, the noise of or argument was this fate, right? That the noise from tennis to pickleball was more intense noise in the eyes of some than, you know? Is there, have you encountered examples where that kind of a concept?
Yeah, and I don't, it's that, I think there's some mention of that in here where uh, it's not really necessarily based around that, but there is something like up to three decibel difference isn't com- isn't noticeable.
Right.
Five is starting to be.
Pretty low bar.
Yeah, so something um, where it starts to get.
Yeah, okay.
Potentially significant. Um, so that's in here somewhere.
It's under uh, page, packet page fifteen, noise and land use compatibility guidelines, second paragraph. Decibel change is considered a just noticeable difference, five decibel is required before any noticeable change in community response would be expected. Take it back, may direct me towards that paragraph again. Page fifteen, packet page fifteen, the second paragraph of C one.
At the bottom of the settings.
Anyway, so that was just kind of the question that you know, somebody builds a how something changes next door, right? Goes to a year round school from a, I I don't, you know, I'm just thinking of very unlikely scenarios for us here.
Yeah, but you have to also consider, you know, going from no, no noise to five decibels is um
Right.
Probably, probably is not a nuisance even.
These are still average values, right? Like five decibels per day?
Well, this 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 just says DV, but that would be interesting to clarify.
Well, then there's the whole issue that there's, there's no way to, I mean, I don't, you can't there's no way to deal with this, but you know, some noises at one decimal increase are unacceptable, you know, versus the noise of the wind or the waves or, you know, there's certain noises that are pleasant and people like to hear.
Yeah.
Um.
Which is, you know, thinking back to kind of general re categorization of noise by atmospheric environmental, looking forward to sort of a separate discussion, it's kind of incorporated into this in various places that might just be worth pulling all of that out and saying, hey, this type of noise is just fine. And in environments of the most severe noise is.
I'd see someone in Trinidad complaining about the age of the wind.
Uh, yeah, right.
They're pulling.
I was very angry one night. I woke up and then realized that the loud noise that I could go sleep was the ocean. Give yourself some new perspective for the rest of the year. Anything else kind of broad? Or do we want to kind of go through this now?
Uh, ye- yeah, so the noise element is not part of the LCP, but it surely is something that we would consider when looking at a CDP, evaluating a CDP, so how does, how do those two square, I guess, or?
So, well. It depends on how your ordinances are written. Often, a CDP is a separate approval from other approvals and Trinidad, they sort of go together.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it comes up in permit discussions that much for small projects. It would be more for projects that would have CEQA associated with them probably. I'd have to think about that some.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, unlikely to really be an issue, but somebody wanted to put develop industrial space, say behind Murphy's or something.
Maybe if you have somebody to put in a a shop with equipment that would be really noisy in a residential sound area, so.
And we are, I mean, talk about noise when we're evaluating a CDP.
Yeah.
Certainly construction noise that gets conditioned in, but.
But it's really, that's a city issue, not a coastal resource issue.
Yeah.
It's tampered.
It's construct.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
No, I think that's a good, you know, when we're writing the code, um it would probably be good to differentiate that.
I mean, I guess it doesn't really, it shouldn't really affect like our uh ability, technical, technically to like enforce some sort of noise restrictions through the planning process.
No, because the city has that authority regardless of Nichols.
And then, well, yeah, but like the going through the CDP process wouldn't like negate that or.
No, it shouldn't. No.
Okay. It's not the most super thought. Yeah.
Third, the page I had any on this, actually page twelve, I don't think I had any before that.
I have um, I can page carry.
Okay, Sam, what you got?
Under background, uh noise is defined as unwanted sound, and I'm not sure that's fully accurate.
Do you propose instead?
I don't know.
Um. Does it need to be defined?
No, I mean, I think that noise is sounds that are sort of distinguishable from noises that might be perceived by some as being unpleasant. I don't know that it's necessarily unwanted sound.
Say it.
You ever see unpleasant?
Not always.
Is noise necessarily always unpleasant?
Right, I guess like I said, I mean, one of the points I'm trying to reiterate here is this.
Perspective.
Some noise is just a reasonable and expected part of community life. Or just being on the frigging North Coast where there's waves and wind and animals. I'm saying that.
I I think, I think that is a kind of a standard definition for using in like ordinances, but I think that's, you know, that's kind of a a term for convenience, because you have to differentiate unwanted noise versus other sounds. And so maybe maybe we're overusing the term noise and just saying sound.
For what it's worth.
So I think in an ordinance, it would be sound versus noise and we're using them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just pulling Oxford here, a sound, especially one that is loud or unpleasant or that causes disturbance. Definition of noise, so it does have a some negative connotation by definition.
Yeah.
I suppose you could try and put a whole paragraph in here defining really what they mean by noise.
Right. That's not necessarily what I was hoping for, but certainly could.
And I mean, the, you know, the purpose statement kind of also puts some context on it too, right? The purpose of the noise element is to ensure the local planning area limits the exposure to the community to excessive noise levels in noise sensitive areas at noise sensitive times of the day. So there's kind of some context already. You know, a couple paragraphs ahead of that obsolete or.
But if we haven't mitigated next queries that they have hoped to.
Yeah.
But I wonder, Chris, this could come into how you're categorizing. So maybe, maybe where you're categorizing you know, community sources versus nuisance, it would be many sources are the sounds. And then the nuisances are the noises.
Yeah, right. I think that's yeah, exactly. I mean, noise might be defined as sound, especially which can be perceived as a nuisance, you know, I think that there's.
That's just a subjective, but yeah.
Yeah, totally.
It was just.
I mean, like if it's three thousand four, it's a bigger, if there's it's so noisy and nobody's perceiving it as a nuisance. Okay, now we're now we're the commentary on nice to share, I think you did, please.
Well, the whole paragraph is actually pretty good, I think. Yeah, the lead sentence is like, what?
Are you proposing any change or?
Oh, but I I mean, I could include a little bit more description that you know, there are other sounds that are part of the ambient noise or community noise or environmental noise. Sounds that aren't. So maybe add a little bit of an explanation here.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that, yeah, right, that's, I don't have anything to suggest to my tongue, but I think yes, differentiating between reasons and for ambient and expected and reasonable sounds is. Anything else?
Page eleven, anybody? Back to page eleven? I just had a question. The the maybe you guys discussed this last week, the redlining of ambient tent of residents to maintain those characteristics. Why that was struck? One of the, I think, one of the things that people enjoy about our community is it is relatively quiet and noise free, you know. For for me personally, the only consistent pollution source is one oh one, you know, other than that, it's pretty amazing when they hear, which I get to appreciate every time I go down to the Bay Area work. I fundamentally have that reinforced frequently. It's I I don't know, I just, I I guess my, unless there's a strong sentiment to redline that, I'd like to see that added back in because I think that is an important part of the characteristic of our community, and I think.
I think I would have taken that out based on the comments at the last meeting, but I might have also misunderstood.
Like in that same sentence, uh the term noise pollution is used, and I don't think it's defined anywhere else, and that might actually be a reasonable assertion in that sense that I was so troubled by. I think noise pollution is defined as unwanted sound.
Seems like that is the only place that the pollution came in.
This whole first bit is all rifle definitions. Well, on that same page, um give me my thoughts about the fact that tourists shouldn't be distinguished from community, they're not lessens.
Also, that's a little bit of a trouble with that sentence you wrote there. It's all in red. You didn't need an inch, Trinidad Elementary School, you need to say something else.
An and in the wrong place. Oh, uh, because it was.
Instead of and, sure, I consider it should have been and.
Well, I guess the the harbor area and Saunders Shopping Center were a part of the commercial operations.
Yeah.
So, but I'm missing an and with, I I think I was probably going to add some more things there and.
Kind of look like you're going to add something to the sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
The middle of the thing is going to be picky. One of the things, this sentence, what you say, between wind and waves, Trinidad also has some substantial natural contributors to ambient noise. I mean, what what else? Would you be birds and meat?
Oh, I think that I think that was just referring to women lives. So maybe the also uh between wind and waves, Trinidad has substantial, so I don't think that that's probably the also is confusing.
Okay. What, just to the tourist thing, what if that were to change to recreational? Be broadly encompassing, but like that.
Recreational activities.
Mm hmm. Because whether or not it's, it doesn't matter who is creating the noise with their recreation. If it's nuisance, that's the issue, I don't care who you are doing, right? That's.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, blaming tourists, you know, as a subject of people.
No, I mean.
Imagine how that got inserted, but I would like not to be inserted.
We could swap that into recreational activities, so.
I'm not good with that.
I like it. I do appreciate him if he has added the last time, but the low flying aircraft, because we do have the approach corridor, you know, right off the edge of the the head. Back to page thirteen, page four.
Not particularly a big deal, but in the paragraph beginning city streets, not how federal traffic, there's a few specific instances called out. And I only noticed because there's been an uptick in activity, but I think trucks coming from the quarry should maybe be considered that section. There's been, basically, it's just like, tougher tracks coming down. That's full of rock, I assume they come from the quarry, I never really know.
So that would be on West Haven and.
They enter, they do introduce, they give them the highlighting in city streets.
I had a comment kind of on that generally as well. Um, well, the first one is the the statement during most times. That's pretty, I don't know, I don't, I don't like that. I I'd like to see that either defined better or removed. Because I think that's pretty subjective, a high level of traffic. You know, in this town, a high level of traffic can be three cars just went by in the hour. That can be, I mean, that legitimately can be a dramatic uptick, right? For somebody in this in this community. Um, and then just to the to the point we were kind of talking about, that the the last two sentences or the last three or four, the the rest of the paragraph. That's something, you know, kind of along the lines of, um, you know, large and small delivery trucks, along with other commercial vehicles, are acknowledged as noise sources within and then perhaps listing the areas, if it's even worse, even if it's worth listing specific areas at this point. Um, but just kind of grouping it together, like the issue are large trucks, where they are, they're going to make noise. They don't only make noise in these specific spots, right?
This, I mean, this is why I suggested separating stationary sources from transportation sources of noise.
Wait, I mean, they are kind of, I mean, there's traffic noise in station areas, you know, section one, section three, right? They are broken down. Yeah, by that way already, right? Unless I'm misunderstanding.
Well, you're, I mean, you're correct, I would, I would favor sort of expansion of the stationary noise sources to include or the community related aspects. And then lock, you know, traffic noise, aircraft noise together into this. The bank of you, like I said, here, the state of professional vehicles, importation vehicles, not just like, you know, the trucks making deliveries to Murphy's, but UPS truck coming by between three, three thirty coming every day, you know, so there's noise there.
And also thirteen.
Yeah. Um, highway one oh one is listed as a stationary resource. One oh one is only noisy if there's cars on this.
But is it a fixed location, a fixed spot that it's generated from?
Yeah, but the vehicles, the vehicles are the what are moving. Right?
Hopefully, yeah.
Well, I think, uh, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Chris, but it's how I want to want is what's for one, it's outside of our jurisdiction.
Yep.
So it's sort of like this thing that's over here that you could hear from every, almost everywhere. But and that's why it's more stationary in my mind than the traffic on the local streets, I guess.
The streets are permanent, right, for now.
But you could make, you could make the argument that if the streets of the highway didn't exist, the noise wouldn't exist, right? So they only exist because of that fixed location, providing that pathway, that conduit for the noise to be here.
On the city, on the city streets, it's because I think maybe the difference is really the volume of traffic too. And that, you know, one oh one is more or less a constant flow of traffic. So it's a constant noise as opposed to like on a city street or UPS example, it.
Yeah, I think a conduit or high like high volume thoroughfare, I guess, is what makes it a stationary noise source. But again, I think there's an argument that like, completely with the issue noise. Your traffic noise exists because there was that approach. Which is most of the first station.
Yeah, if you your point, relatable traffic noise to transportation noise. The highway one oh one to that.
You suggesting a change in the wording?
Yeah, I've already sort of like proposed the sort of bigger scale changes with reorganization, it's sort of a hard, but not too much longer. So we suggest some changes, but broader changes.
We not really limited to everybody, is it, are these criteria that you have here, you know, aircraft, stationary, are those pretty standardized points?
Fairly standard, um. But, you know, I haven't looked at a lot of noise ordinances and elements recently, but they are pretty standard across jurisdictions. But that doesn't necessarily mean that Trinidad has to discuss them. I think, you know, you're talking about doing a, like a secret document or something like that.
Under these headings.
Yeah.
Certainly Trinidad doesn't seem to have any unique noise sources or potential for unusual compared to other developed areas, right? So why not use more standard stuff?
No, I mean, you don't have industrial or ag. So it's really fairly natural and highway and.
I think you could argue that the lack of noise, this unique aspect of the sort of noise environment in Trinidad. Any given night. My front porch, the hottest thing is the rebuild, you know, like that's that's a pretty unique situation.
Well, that's true, yeah, it's unique, quiet. That's our ambient noise of nature builds.
I mean, I'm just thinking of two is, you know, obviously that changes where you are in town, right? Are you elevated on the other side of one oh one? And then also making sure we're drafting documents that live in our our function with potential growth of the town, right? So writing a document that fits exactly what our footprint is today is, in my view, narrow minded for us, for me as a planning commissioner, right? My job is to, you know, consider the future and, you know, annexation is is something that is quite likely, I think, to happen at some point in the next lifetime or two, right? That's beautiful, and so just making sure what we're doing is staying aligned with that as well. I think there's something to be said for if, you know, an entity that we're beholden to or rub up against frequently, CEQA has certain categories and it's going to make it much easier to compare and contrast and to come up with our own set of criteria and guidelines, I don't know. Let me think about that, to me personally. On page fourteen, shall we?
Again, tourists are distinguished from other community members.
Yep, everybody good with striking that?
Yeah. You could replace with community members.
Was.
Do you want a substitute recreation and not?
Yeah. Would that be a stationary noise source though? It could be. You know what I mean, it's, it could be, yeah. So a roving pickleball game, you know, a mobile. Um, but yeah, but I I had a question on that too for stationary generators. Um, I had fixed importable generators which are power generation during episodic losses of power.
Yeah.
I can tell you that Murphy's is that's my first indicator that power is indeed out, and a generator kicks on, or at least there's been a blip and there's a lot of personal generators running around in town, but we had that storm in twenty three, was it? Immediately after that, a lot of generax were sold and and they now fire up with great reliability.
Sure do.
Throughout town.
But here it's the same way, by the way.
Yeah. Your house must shield that, let's hit you, thank you for buffering, thank you for buffering, Murphy's.
Certainly.
So I have a comment under, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, I know that, yeah.
And this, this section under noise standards number five, about three fourths of the way down that it says, although the city does not receive a lot of noise complaints, it would be good to have some more uniform standards that. The term good.
It may be beneficial?
Yeah, I I would think we're rating things good and bad here, beneficial versus something, that would be.
And standards for, do we need to, you know, what would be more of a standard for what? What standard would be beneficial?
Yeah.
Noise stand, you know, having noise standards or an ordinance would be beneficial, just to really uh clear about that.
And the other thing is brought up on this page, where they're talking about the data that went into the table. On no noise, where it basically says, um Trinidad does not have many substantial noise sources. Note that the following noise readings were taken on unusually calm days from wind and waves. Now, what's wrong, it it's it's like it's discounting the data a little bit. But isn't that what we're looking for? Is the noise the decibels that are coming from things that are, you know, man caused and stuff? I mean, to say, well, gee, we should have waited for a windy, you know, high surf day, and that would have been better data, see, I.
Well, so maybe I should add back something like the sun, the part of the sentence I took out. And and maybe it's not that the readings are more accurate, but the readings are more informative.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd get better data if you if you if your sound is not being overwhelmed by our natural sounds here.
On the same topic of the noise, I have, I don't dispute that the data that's in this table is accurate. I would suggest that it is incredibly incomplete data set. Uh, it is taken on two days between four fifty nine to five forty three P M and then six twenty two to six forty seven P M. That is absolutely without question, in my opinion, not representative for a noise study. Um, you know, the 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 noise at any of these locations will absolutely vary based off the time of day, days of the week. I mean, I know there's there's another thing you can go to, a three hundred sixty five day noise study is probably a little bit extreme, but I think that, you know, these two very isolated data points. You know, I mean, Murphy's generates at some times of the day more noise and less noise. I can happily tell you what days I think should be there to check freight bay, for example, is, you know, is very different. Um, you know, than than the.
It's the kind of thing I'm looking for, I mean, do you, is is there value in doing that? I mean, we could come up and do some noise readings, we could do some more of the averages, we could do, I mean, the instantaneous stuff's a lot easier.
Sure.
Um.
I mean, I guess I'd say there would be, there could be value in that, but what would we do with that information?
Yeah.
It, to me, it's almost I'd almost suggest just removing the data is almost any more, it's distracting because it gives a very false impression, I think. You know, potentially of the noise values in here. You know, there's there's no noise samples from a lot of places in town.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and if you really want more complete data, you'd need either better descriptions of these, the points these meetings were taking as as well, I mean.
Just a map.
Yeah, I was gonna say you need it.
Some map.
Okay, so that takes care of my problem, because as an example, the Chevron Station fifty feet from the propane tank, well, which direction, I mean, you know, you have the four principal directions, all of them have different. Yeah, so. It might be a maybe a reference to the map if you're gonna put the data. Uh, in the, in the document, not to kept the supply of that, but. Just a reference to it.
I mean, do we have to have data in here? Is it meaningful?
I mean, it's also subjective, that the data. It gets really, I mean, it was what you're saying, it's just so difficult to get a data set that accurately describe or. Accurately demonstrates what we all think or feel. That's what matters.
Yeah, I think that later.
I mean, I think that was demonstrated as a pickleball thing, because, you know. When they did the pickleball demonstration, we're taking noise readings and the elementary school was a lot louder than the pickleball. But it's the pickleball that annoys.
And like if you, if you flip back, for instance, flipping forward, which the. Noise compatibility index, right, like. It's probably recording out that one of the loudest things listed on the previous table we were just discussing. On average, is the ocean, right, like the state beach parking lot with five to ten foot, let's assume are waves with sixty-five decibels. Like right away, you know, the majority of that chart is eaten up just by. Like what I was saying in town, is the ocean. So I mean, that's like the discussion of.
And and maybe that's more of the important point there is that often loudest noise source.
Well, that's a loud sound, is it really noise? Light to hear the sound.
True, it covers up some of the.
Yeah, it's, and maybe a paragraph giving that kind of perspective, saying, you know, as an example. Noise recorded at State Beach is X decibels with this wave height. That same level of noise, reading wise, can also be found standing ten feet away from whatever.
Diesel truck.
You know, uh. You know, they're both, one, I'm gonna be much happier sitting next to, right?
Well, the frequency of of the sound has a a major effect on noise.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I think something that's sort of kind of generally worth relating is that, you know, the. The planes that do tend to fly overhead are flying when the wind is out of the south, and that's usually during like a pretty heavy windstorm. For example, where like the winds are already about, it's windy outside, and so. You know, in the context of our current discussion, the. Natural noises, to some extent, mask the noise of the aircraft, which otherwise can be borderline intolerable on normal.
This leads me to the question, is there likely to be? From an outside source, the state of California, say, a requirement sometime to do. Of more appropriate noise study?
Potentially, um, so there are guidance and. So there are some requirements for, um, noise elements, and I can get you a little bit more specific information about that. Um, you know, things like, like the not noise contours on the highway, um, or something that you're supposed to have. Now, I was gonna look and see if Caltrans has has that, I think they might, um. But that's not to say the state's gonna come after the city for not having. As I, you know, again, I think it comes up more in the frame, there are state requirements for. Insulating housing projects, especially if they're state funded, affordable kind of housing. Um, and so you have to know what your noise environment is so that you know how much you have to insulate. To get to that interior noise standard, or there's exterior noise standards too, so how far away do you have to be from the noise? But it seems, I mean, it seems like you should be able to do an individual study if anything ever.
It's site specific, so.
Site specific, yeah. I, you know, I don't. I mean, you know, there could be housing that goes on, goes, you know, on the lot behind Murphy's or something.
Well, the question we have an answer, just just thank you for that, is. Aaron's question is, does this data come out of this document? It's being not really represented.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm totally fine with that, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I would, I would genuinely agree with him.
And I mean, it's it's old data anyway, but. And that's why, you know, I I didn't necessarily intend to keep this, I was gonna ask you if there was anything you guys wanted in terms of.
I think just acknowledging that the noise environment is dynamic is important. That any recordings that are made are gonna be represented by a single snapshot in time and not much else.
And to Roland's point, something that, you know, the 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 frequency of the noise, you know, the. Not sure the volume is the issue, right?
It's all sound, but when it's calling noise, all of a sudden we, we had a. Deiracating element, which isn't necessary for.
Three decibels of fingernail on a chocolate core would be just as unpleasant, I think, as, you know, eighty.
Screaming baby a hundred feet away.
Well, what's the ocean doing that day? Anything else on fourteen then, or are we kind of faulted that one there?
Okay, one more thing, um. In in there, so we talked about this earlier, five decibel change is often considered a significant impact.
Oh, six, page fifteen, oh, it's.
Yeah, fifteen, and it's like.
Where'd that come from, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, significant is is one of those.
I don't remember what this source is.
Are these decibels or D D As?
It says just decibels.
Well, this is because these are instantaneous things, aren't they?
Yeah, but D D As. We do the time weighted, uh, no, it's weighted to human frequencies.
Well, if you're talking about people perceiving, I mean, that's that's a moment in time. Right? I mean, this is about, except it changed. Up to, your noise levels in the city are perceived well. And if somebody's perceiving a change in sound, that's not an average, that's that's what's happening right now. It goes from, you know. Fifty decibels to fifty-five, that's.
Yeah, right, and just reiterate, I'm going back to the the definition of an A weighted sound level from, you know, page twelve. Uh, where it emphasizes the very low, very high frequency components, the amount, a manner similar to the frequency response of the human ear. So like, are we talking about absolute decibels here, are we talking about D D As, or? Putting in data itself, are those decibels, are they D D As, or?
At the top of page sixteen, we're back to D D A again. We did have a question on the last paragraph, the kind of, there's a fifteen, um. I don't know, I don't have a good solution, but you know, this paragraph talks about, you know, residential versus commercial, distinguishing appropriate sound levels between those and. Those about each other in this town, pretty much in every location, right? You're within hearing distance of a commercial right next to residential, so I'm not sure that's. The best fit for us to have one set of standards for commercial when literally across the fence is residential. Again, I don't have a solution to offer tonight, but. Kind of the old smoking, no smoking lines in restaurants, right, or airplanes, yeah, I did magically stop there.
And I forget whether it's in this document or something else I encountered, but distinguishing between sources and receivers. Uh, I think is important, right, because you could be a residential receiver of commercially produced sound.
I think I'm sixteen.
We were talking about table N three. Halfway through, we say that, uh. They were used to determine whether new noise source requires communication or achieve a compatible noise environment. It's got to be a word more like acceptable or something, I mean, compatible with what? Think that's.
Get the next paragraph down, does use acceptable? That's on sixteen?
Second sixteen or seventeen, around sixteen, I was seeing there's any else on sixteen that people.
Well, well, I know that this particular document, the way it's laid out. You know, table N three, uh. Discussions on this page, and then the table is on the next page. And those two things should not be on separate pages.
But I did bother with the formatting because the track changes is gonna.
And I know that if we do it, that's a change, but just to make sure it doesn't happen again.
No, it's that kind of thing, but.
Uh, then I think we're on to seventeen.
Yeah, I guess, that's special, it shouldn't surprise anybody, um, under goal N O one. Excessive noise, maintaining a quiet and healthy environment, free from excessive noise, and I think that's. But that's a bit subjective, and I think it's also probably worth. Defining excessive noise, which is unreasonable or out of character with community life. That's a noise which is considered to be nuisance.
What about just striking free from excessive excessive noise? Of maintaining a quiet and healthy environment and protecting the quality of life of residents, visitors and wildlife by adequately monitoring and regulating noise and minimizing land use conflicts. That subjectivity is kind of a little bit.
Yeah, fair enough, but again, I think. To no surprise, I'm arguing that there is noise that's. You just gotta accept as a community member, you gotta accept noise from elementary school, you gotta accept noise from a playground, you gotta accept noise from a pickleball court, uh, these are. These are land uses which by definition create noise.
Well, maybe that's where it's noise versus sound.
My solution would work there too, I guess, but that would have to be defined.
That would bring that word back into the document.
It's a general comment on noise element policies, I mean, I think that's great. Channeling, you know, Richard, how in the world do we force, accomplish, monitor, you know, there's lots of. You know, it's everything in programs, all the programs we put in here, this is again, just. Yeah, we're gonna have all these standards, but unless we, you know, I mean, I don't know.
Go down a couple paragraphs and then program N O one dot one dot one. The maximum level permitted is sixty decibels, and that's, that's. Exceeded by the ocean.
Can we cite the ocean?
But that's the ocean is not noise, the ocean is sound.
And the decibels don't care if it's noise or just sound. One jump in a nineteen, in that first paragraph, basically where it says at the bottom. Made in five D B A increase for ambient noise, less than sixty decibels. Again, even if the ambient environment is very quiet. Reserving it on sound in the environment. And we have to consider. Ambient noise to get doing the. Noise that is part of the requirements.
So, kind of on that same vein, if we don't have data to tell us what our. Numbers are to begin with, right, and just look at the definition of. You know, C N E L, community noise equivalent, right? The average A weighted noise level during, you know, it gives very specific criteria after adding five decibels between these hours of days. If we don't have that data, what's the point of having the metric to measure against? How is that valid for our community?
Well, that's where you'd have to have a study.
Yeah, and I guess some, my thought on that. Paragraph was, I guess, how do you? How do you know that a project? What means to study, you know, like, how do you, what makes you think that a project might be noisy enough? That you're gonna make them do a study, I guess.
You have to do comparisons with other things that. Essentially, we're saying, are extremely similar, right? Your research.
You said you have to do some research, I guess. Yeah, you'd have to do a baseline study and then compare your study, you know. I I I mean, I I get what this is trying to do, but it just seems particularly in in light of maybe. Thinking differently about the. The the data points that we did have, including those, this rest of this kind of. All apart for me. Was unenforced, you know, or not not actionable, because if we don't have a value for C N E L, for example, how can we? Ask somebody to mitigate for that or compare their readings against that?
I just imagine putting this. Information out in, in in this plan and then following it up with ordinances. And then. Someone comes along and says, you have these ordinances and you have these specific things. And I think something's going on in the city, hasn't done its job. In evaluating this, you haven't done research, you don't have the data. And I'm still gonna go.
Oh, again, I'll have to look at the requirements, but it could be if we don't have this in here, we're already out of compliance anyway, which.
Maybe, but it's it's really inviting a study, isn't it?
I, I also, I I find it interesting looking at this again, like, that. When it's louder, you can have a lower increase in noise, where it seems like if your existing environment is quieter, it would be. All our increase would be. When you have a quiet environment.
Well, I think that's just because this. Whoever set this threshold is. You can just throw whatever you want in there until you hit that.
Well, this is all leading into the next paragraph, which this city should develop the noise ordinance.
I I do like some of the the concepts in these next few things, you know, some corridors and special events and heavy equipment, you know, but. The maximum permitting noise levels across property lines, yeah, this has got some really. Your sound wave crossed my property line, that's a little too high, Tristan, you know, I'm finally playing with games.
It's one of the only ways you can enforce it.
How much of this is required, I guess, is a question I I I need to hear. To know, one, do we have to solve this problem? We have to solve it, that's one thing, and if not. Is this the problem that? We should be trying to solve right now, or is it something that crops up very infrequently? If at all.
A couple, a couple thoughts come to mind, the first maybe more relevant to this particular page, which is that. That was a gesture earlier about exempting. Activities that are conducted on ground at any public facility during regular hours of operation might be worse. I'm adding to this, that you're exempting, uh, noise restrictions, that.
First, I would find problematic because that isn't, I don't, I'm not saying it's school would necessarily, but the school during a normal business hour. Could, yeah, whatever entity could do that, that to me is. Too wide open of.
Uh, yeah, fair enough, um. And I totally like. I encountered a neighbor who was, uh, glad at the end of last school year that we had heard of the marching band performed from last time. I feel like that's.
Oh, that's cruel.
Yeah, that's a bit unreasonable, right? Like, that's a, that's a. A public venue, uh, during regular business hours, I feel like if they want to have. A public venue during regular business hours, I feel like if they want to have marching band practice, have that it. Yeah, I was saying, I'm not trying to just give your perspective at all on this. That's that's sort of what led me to make that comment.
Yeah. Those are, you know, when when I short, I suppose, the people that complain about the airport, I said, what was here first, the airport or you? You know. Did you know there was an airport here when you bought it? Okay, then. Part time. Funny.
So I have. So the government code that it comes from is the noise element shall identify and appraise noise. Noise element shall identify and appraise noise problems in the community and shall analyze and quantify it to the extent practical as determined by the legislative body. Current and projected noise levels for all of the following sources. Airways, freeways, primary, primary arterials, major local, major local streets, pass rate on. Real world operations, ground rapid transit systems, commercial, general aviation. Gulfport, Ellis Island Military Operations Aircraft Overflight Jet Engine Test Standards, local industrial plants, including, but. Yards, other ground stationary noise source. Three installations. Noise contour shall be shown for all these sources. Miss contour shall be used as a guide for establishing a proper. So there are some pretty specific standards for. So I guess, so I guess my thought was, well, if we at least have a few noise readings, we can. But, you know, so that was the attempt to quantify it to the extent practical.
So with that, I just wanted to ask you about that. So it says, to the extent practical, the intro paragraph and in. Legislative body, is that us by virtue by extension of the city council? Are we the legislative body that's making this determination of whether or not this is?
It'd probably be the city council, but I think certainly you could have that recommendation. So so, yeah, so I think there's some flexibility for the city to decide, and I mean. I don't think anybody's ever gonna come after Trinidad for any of this.
So that's why.
You can heck out and say that.
I mean, you never know, I mean, you know, we had. Um, I don't know if any. One, you might remember the, there was the wood lot, there used to be a guy who chopped wood back behind the Murphy's. Well, I think there's a guy who chucks wood.
He does occasionally, yeah.
At the RV park. Yeah, that became, my goodness.
They should have.
I also, there's a, you mentioned specifically noise problems in the wording of this, which I think might sort of alleviate some of our. Our grappling with this noise versus noise pollution.
Yeah, and appraise noise problems, so so maybe we.
There's a lot of non fulminant.
We make the description, make the argument that there's not. Except for.
Isolated.
Can be isolated, yeah.
I mean, I I dotted down, I dotted down a definition, which I'm sure is flawed of noise pollution. As sound produced by human activity outside of the reasonable and expected parts of community life. Produced by human activity outside of the reasonable and expected parts of community life. Problematic noise, noise pollution or whatever.
Problematic, you know, it's nice to put that label on.
Sure, and some other guidelines are to provide sufficient information concerning the community noise environments that the noise may be. Instead of doing necessary groundwork, open develops the community noise ordinance may be utilized to resolve noise complaint. Develop strategies for abating excessive noise exposure through cost effective mitigation measures in combination with zoning. To avoid incompatible land uses to protect those existing regions of the planning area where noise environments are deemed acceptable and also those locations through.
That seems to be a well thought out list.
It might seem like an uncertain question, but is there any mention of vibration in there? And because Sequelet considers.
Sure, yeah, I think that does show up in here.
Or just just above there, we talk about. Addressing periodic or reoccurring. Sound sources.
Yeah, vibrations can be an issue, and I, I mean, I. Um. You know, vibrations have come up as, is that a? Is that affecting, you know? Vibrations on Edward Street, is that affecting worst?
Not necessarily fall from ruins.
Not necessarily, no, why is.
But definitely not a.
It's a medium heaven, it's a wave coming through medium, I don't know.
Well, so it sounds like overall. Need a little rethink. I need to rethink this a little bit and maybe. Yeah, this this follows, you know, more of a standard noise ordinance format and maybe or noise element format, maybe that's not. That maybe it's really more the argument that there isn't a noise problem. And then maybe talk about ways to make sure that that doesn't become a problem.
Before we leave this completely, I got one more little editing thing in the very last. Paragraph here. They start talking about heavy equipment noises, then there's this example, such as white noise reverse alarms, and it's like. It's very specific example, extremely general stuff, I think that just. We don't need. An example that's specific thing. But he knows about noisy tools, noisy equipment, you know, that you get.
Well, but I didn't know there was such a thing as a white noise reversal.
I think that's.
Not sure what that is.
Yeah, what is it sound like?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know what it, I know what a backup alarm is, you know, on construction improvement, you know, we all know that, and it's irritating.
Yeah.
But.
But yeah, obviously. Um, technology changes with that kind of thing, so it wouldn't, doesn't necessarily make sense to.
Be specific.
That almost sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's the white noise reversal alarm, I think.
That sounds like mitigation.
Doesn't though. That was maybe mitigation.
I think it was LA's noise element specifically calls out phonographs. As a potential source of.
Phonograph, good, perfect.
If we could incorporate that somehow, just I'm wearing this, I'd be very happy, I'd be more content, Trevor, for the next draft.
So Brian would just record play.
Before we just pivot into, we begin with the noise for now.
Yeah, okay, I think, sorry. I can just ask Trevor, like, what's the, was there justification for using the Santa Cruz County noise elements as the source of this? Noise exposure table?
I, well, I mean, I. Have used a number of things from Santa Cruz, both the city and the county for for models for Trinidad. Um, it's probably just one I was looking at and it was copyable. I could copy and paste it.
I know, yeah, because like I said earlier, there's like some very modest differences from like secret thresholds guy, I'm wondering whether it's better to.
I mean, I probably liked the, just how it was organized, and but I I think it's pretty. Common to have, I mean, I think this table is pretty commonly in. Or some version like.
So they put a lot of effort into making that.
Concise.
We'll all be delighted to know I have nothing else on this.
Uh, we'll just pause briefly here, I do see that Paula is online, Paul, I didn't know if you had any. Public comment specific to the noise section of this, we'll be getting to the emergency response next, but if you have anything. Specific to the noise stuff, now's your chance.
Oh.
You're muted again, Paula.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, now you gotcha, go ahead.
Okay, um, just something off the top of my head. I know that you'll be discussing annexation at some point in this century and. There are people in the spheres of influence that have chickens. And we have woodlots, we use chainsaws, so I know how. How much effort it takes to go through all these projected. Ordinances and ideas of. What the law should be in the community and the spheres of influence. A whole different set of circumstances. And. I don't envy you your jobs. I don't know, I don't know what you're gonna do about it. And it you, it might, you might not end up discussing it. This year or next year, but it's. Planning is seems like an extremely. Um, time consuming and tedious occupation, so. I I thank you for your work and I'll and I'll let you get back to it.
Thank you, Paula.
It's mostly Trevor's time.
Yes, right. Um, all right, so then shifting into the emergency response. Uh, which is just a few pages of my comparison.
Just I stole some background information, um, some from the, I think, the hazard mitigation plan, some from other. Um, safety elements, some from the E O P. Um, but it doesn't have a lot of detail in terms of specific emergency services for Trinidad because that doesn't exist. Um, and I'm. Putting someone else will write that. So I know a lot about. So that's in terms of the text. And then, yeah, I've sort of combed other safety elements and filled some things for policies and perframes that I thought would. The old draft safety on.
Any global comments from anybody before we have been paged by page or just go page by page here? Right, uh, page, packet page twenty. I had a comment for the second to the last paragraph, when an incident occurs, is it stabilization activities? That's where it talks about the E O C. I would suggest putting a reference in there to Trinidad's E O C and emergency plan, because technically those things exist on paper. But, you know, the the city will be dependent on theoretically based on, not theoretically, based upon the size of the emergency and the incident. The county might not open up their E O C for us if it's a very localized issue, right? And so it's gonna be incumbent upon the city to do that.
Does the city have an E O C? I think what the operations plan referred to.
Yes. And there I thought, I'll have to look again, I haven't looked at that document in a few years, but. If not, the city should have its own, that's a separate discussion for the council, I guess, then. But I mean, the. If for a localized disaster with our water treatment plant, say, for example, went offline abruptly or something, and we declared a local emergency. I don't know necessarily if the county is gonna fire up their E O C to manage that, not that you would need it, you know, the the resource is there, but that was my comment on that one.
And then if it's a really big emergency as well, Trinidad could be cut off.
Could be cut off, and then very frequently, there's kind of like the master E O C that's coordinating that kind of stuff, you know, for example, earthquake in. You know. Uh, Riedel, I would imagine that the county had their. E O C up and running, but I would imagine the city also had theirs running in parallel, doing similar functions, right?
Okay, so does the city have a E O C or not?
I did object that, I thought there was a place designated.
Yes, it would make sense, yeah, the town hall or the fire station designated, yeah, and I think the rancher, yeah, also.
But I think if, one, we should have, one, and two, it should be referenced there just in this document, just to. Make sure people are aware there's a local.
On the same page regarding your highlighted query, Trevor. I just wanted to ask whether it was appropriate to mention that private security company, my understanding is that that's sort of like a temporary. Sort of last ditch effort to provide some additional. Pretty town, I don't get the impression that would be one of people's first choice. About that it's working, I don't wanna, you know.
I mean, we could certainly put a time at the time of this writing or something, I mean, I think it is. Well, I don't know how that fits in the, that's part of what I don't, you know, I'm not involved in that part of the city's operations.
So I guess I would direct that question, like, plus, you know, I feel about inclusion of that private security company there.
Is this reference?
The highlighted bit on top of page, that last sentence there, so I guess that whole paragraph, I think.
Oh, okay.
Done differently. Might be, you know, the city of Trinidad. Has the requirement to provide law enforcement and fire protection services to its residents. You know. Currently, that's being provided by, the law enforcement is truly being provided by the sheriff's department, the the security firm provides no law enforcement service, they have no powers greater than you or I as a, as a citizen, right? They just don't legally, my understanding, right? They could do a citizen's arrest, that's it, which we can do, right? So I think something like that, the the law enforcement is true provided, you know, but maybe just emphasizing that the city has that obligation, right? I think, or general law city, I think, is what we categorized on as, and the same for fire protection. Yeah, one of the things that currently it's Hubble County Sheriff's Department, Dan. Trinidad Volunteer, West Haven, Hellfire. That's fine, but yeah, kind of keeping it evergreen. I just had a question for everybody else here, the the next two paragraphs, kind of, the next one describing the mutual aid and kind of how that system works, is that beneficial to keep in here? You know, I have a very. Overly informed position on a lot of this stuff, so to me, that's, you know. Common sense in my in my brain, but it's it's not, so I think that might be helpful to keep in there when I read it.
I think. I thought it was.
Okay, good, all right. Explain how things work, right?
Yeah. How dynamic is all of that, thinking about keeping this evergreen?
It's been forever, yeah.
Not now, not.
The 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 master groups and entities have been those entities for a long time, but that that system works. Else on that page, next one. For alert methods, you asked about any more alert methods, one that popped into my mind is the city has what? That new, well, it's not that new anymore, but the website of notification. That we all signed up, or that many of us signed up for. I think it's underutilized by the city, but I think some more routine emergency notifications, there's an email distribution list, there's text messaging, the website has this capability that we chose. That company on purpose, so. That would be another notification for kind of more routine stuff, I know when there's water shortages and during the tank.
Okay, the city website has some of these.
The city has a capacity to do that, yeah, I think it currently lives through the website. You know, Gabe has his email distribution list, so there are some other. For lower, non emergent, but critical.
Okay.
Information.
Is the, like those earthquake alerts, that's not coming from a company, right? That's coming from. U S G S or something else.
All of the above.
It depends on the sign, I think it also depends on who you sign up.
And that's where you get different information, for example, with tsunami, right, the county. Some entities issued higher levels, but other entities, no, we don't think that's necessary, and that's what elicited the confusion, some people were evacuating.
Yeah, I've been thinking specifically about.
Not the comments before.
Just the moments before, that's that can't be, that can't be from the county.
U S G S, I would think.
As you consider how many alert events I assume.
California GeoIs also.
I don't think, like, where the rapid dissemination information is, I don't think there's any reliance on county infrastructure.
Except for evacuations ahead of fires, that stuff, that is going to be accounting.
Yeah, right, I, yeah. I'm on those seconds here, right?
Yeah, okay. And once I just tell you to pull over, duck and cover, right? Those ones, yeah.
The third full paragraph down. It's awfully specific, right? Like, does this, does this information belong in the safety element or is it belong more in like a? Like, I guess I have a, I don't really fully understand the scope of this document of these specific instructions or these specific instructions right here.
Yeah, that is, that's a good question. And maybe it's really more of a mapping thing. But yes, safety elements are required to provide an analysis of evacuation. It may not need to be in this, in this format, though.
I'm thinking like specifically with regard to under drag, right? Like, yes, that's, that'd be great if there was egress into the state parks. You know, as you've said, using Green Diamond Land to evacuate as well, necessary. But that seems very specific for sort of this section rather than something more.
Maybe you should go someplace else.
I mean, it is, right, it is. That's one of the more specific suggestions. Program goals, yeah, there is, essay at 8.2.
Well, I guess I sort of put the text in to frame the. But it doesn't have to be that detailed.
And I would suggest instead of dead end limited access, limited ingress egress is a better term because dead end is not your only limiting, right? It's ingress and egress for. I think I have 8.10, page 26, where they appear again, case. I think there's several limited egress routes, you know, in Trinidad. Maybe pulling out that, those next couple of example sentences. And then if you feel it's important leaving that these situations are also common, you know, in the immediate area surrounding Trinidad. Yeah, might kind of lay that foundation you were hoping for, Trevor. Guess out of the way to name, I think my street is limited, you know, I think your street, you know.
We don't need to put on.
Yeah. Have a question on the next paragraph where you've got East Bay mud, is that just an artifact from the source document?
Yeah.
Okay.
I ran right over there.
Another acronym, yeah, right? And then I had a question about your reference to CERT. It's just kind of sitting there, just basically, it's a great, it's a beautiful definition of CERT and what that team, what a CERT team can do. But it doesn't specifically say that the Greater Trinidad Area has a CERT team, you know what I mean? It's like, by the way, you say.
I probably didn't paste it off the CERT, I said.
Yes, but maybe some context saying, you know, the Greater Trinidad Area has formed a CERT team which covers, you know, both the city of Trinidad and the surrounding communities. They can provide services, you know.
It sure belongs in here somewhere.
Yeah.
If you have it.
And I really want to, I don't know how to do this necessarily, but make sure that it's clear to people reading this that CERT is not a replacement for anything else. Right, it is a bridge to get to the point where rescuers can get here in sufficient numbers to do something. They do not replace law enforcement, they do not replace fire, they do not replace search and rescue, and it is all volunteer. So if all the volunteers are out of town or buried or, you know, collapsed or can't, you know, this, this team is not a solution. It is something else that can help us kind of bridge the gap in our limited resources. I think that's a really important point because I think that gets missed a lot by folks. I've heard comments made by councils and other stuff. I've had to help educate them as to what CERT really can and can't do and how it should be viewed. You know, as a phenomenal tool, but it's not a replacement for.
And back to your point earlier about, you know, so you're training that they all begin to provide certain protections. I think you could sort of subdivide this section into professional services versus community organizations or citizen organizations, where in the citizen organizations, but you could outline the potential for having, I think there's been talk about ambassadors who wanted the streets answering questions during crime and also private security firms to get inserted in there as a possibility where citizens could provide some additional assistance supplementing or bridging the gap while professional services.
I gristle still to this day a little bit with the use of the word professional because I think there can be volunteer groups that are tremendously professional and particularly when it comes to the volunteer fire service, that can be a very charged word. You know, when I was a volunteer, it was very, almost insulting. And I know that wasn't the intent, so I just want to make sure we don't put that in here because these people dedicate a tremendous amount of their time and their dedication to become trained, to become competent and to provide these services. So.
Do you have any suggestions as sort of support of my broader re-categorization?
What I guess, what was the intent, kind of?
Well, I mean, like, like you said, that CERT really bridges a gap until, I won't use the term special services, but until some of these other organizations can provide support.
Right.
So there's other sort of citizens-based organizations like CERT, like ambassadors, like if necessary.
Emergency, it's like emergency responders, does that encompass more of that sort of official?
It's official services.
Or unofficial though either.
Well, if you call up your dictionary, what's the definition of professional? I mean, I think a lot of people think if it's your profession, it means that's what you do for your livelihood, at least partly, and it suggests paid positions. I think you're right, using the term for people who are qualified. I think that's the general use to term professional.
I, I hear you, I would say specifically to the fire service, the vast majority of folks who provide fire service in Humboldt County, let alone the United States of America, are not compensated. Yeah. So, but they are incredibly professional.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why.
So there's, that's where, and again, this is, you know, going back to.
It's a word.
Volunteer outside of this community. And I might, I just wanted to just provide a word of caution on how we use that word in this document. Anything other page that you've just kind of, we're, I've kind of lost track, are we on 22 now?
We are.
The rest of Syria.
And I, you know, I'm not sure how much description of these hazards we really need in here because these are covered in the rest, the rest of the safety element for this, but this is a little bit more focused on the results, I guess. But, yeah.
Our propane line, gas lines? Better define that for gas line.
No.
I mean, I had that same thought when I read through that part, that's just like, oh wait, we tie like defining what earthquake is or what a tsunami is. But I guess is, is this part of safety element sort of acting somewhat independently? Like somebody might just pull this apart.
No, it should be really, I mean, it is, it's not going to be part of the LCP necessarily because it's not going to govern development, CDPs. But no, it is definitely part of the safety element. This isn't necessarily something that is in other safety elements.
This does bring in the more regional issue that our, our local hazard doesn't bring out. We talk about, because here, like you talk about, the tsunami can take out the highway at Clan Beach North. I mean, the city safety element doesn't talk about those things.
But, no, and I, yeah, well, I think, well, this would be the city safety element, but I don't think that is talked about up in the tsunami section.
Yeah, because you're talking about an access problem due to a disaster. It is short, I mean, it's a pretty wordy document on reading.
I could definitely work on, again, I was sort of looking for text because I didn't have any text. And so, yes, I think there is, there needs to be more text on some things and less text on others. So for this one in the chat, you could.
A couple of things I forgot to mention, just that first line under item two, falling hazards are discussed in more detail above, just changing that to more specifically like earlier in the safety element rather than above, that way, you know, it's good. And then when you do list, you know, the ground failure, those things, specific hazards include but are not limited to, might be some good language to put in there, or examples of specific hazards include ground failure, fire-associated landslides.
A lot of this text is taken from, directly from.
23.
Yeah, page 23. Probably remove what a typical soil debris avalanche.
Oh, absolutely. Ridiculously detailed in there. Let me just take that sentence out.
Four paragraphs down about the transport of hazardous substances and wondering, maybe I don't want to know, but what extent do hazardous substances, I guess, is 101? I mean, there's, there are sort of official, sort of, what's that?
You don't want to, yeah.
On 101, yeah.
Long 101, is it in town proper, like off the highway?
Not a lot.
So it's like a trans designated hazardous materials route? So that's a thing, right? Like, there are some places where hazardous materials.
A lot of fuel is going up and down the road, there are.
They tend to designate places they don't want things to go as opposed to things they do, like the Caldecott Tunnel, for example, with that cut fire many years ago in the East Bay. No longer can have, you know, fuel vehicles through during certain hours of the day, so it kills many people, basically.
So no such regulations around here?
No what?
No such regulations around here, to our knowledge?
No, Highway 101 is a phenomenal corridor. You know, and a fun hazmat fact, because I do hazmat as well, is that, you know, the large, one of the largest carriers of hazardous materials is posted up as UPS and FedEx. Well, what's really fun is this, you know, if, if, if the triggering, so if you were running a business, this is a sidebar, and they said 100 pounds means you have to label the shipments hazardous, what are you going to do? There you go. So now that shipment's unlabeled going up and down the road, right? And it's not, the things aren't even, they're not dangerous, I don't know, there's not gurgling, bubbling things, but there's a tremendous amount of things that are going up and down the road. And the DOT has pretty robust protections in place, that's why you don't hear a lot of those things go.
Yeah, okay. So relevant, I guess, is the answer to my question.
To that point in that paragraph, the hazard, it's, it does talk about along highways and railways. I think we could probably get a little bit more specific here, along Highway 101 and lose the railway reference. Such time as a railroad comes back into over the vicinity.
I think there is, there's also hazardous materials transported on. Roads as well, right?
So, yeah.
But more likely to occur, so isn't it?
So 23. Four.
They do reference the city's emergency operations center right here at the top, the worst.
You find it.
Yes. In the middle there, where we talk about public education, we bring in extreme heat. I don't think we can take that out of this.
Oh man, 75.
Yeah.
Bring it here on Monday. In that same section, though, I think that disseminating information to the public is, a conduct to me seems like initiating public education campaigns, but like disseminating or facilitating seems like that would also be, you know, if the county's got materials about tsunami hazards, just distribute them.
So replace conduct with facilitate?
No, conduct, facilitate, or disseminate, I guess would be fine. True feelings, but. I don't know, all of the awareness needs to originate like at town hall, for example. And under 8.3, the CERT training, what type of support we're talking about, financial support? Like, some good pats on the back for the CERT folks.
The city already does financial support for CERT team, and there's their budget board.
And provide a, they provide a space.
The city is the official sponsor of the Greater Trinidad Area CERT team, so they're sponsoring a team of benefits.
So maybe continue to sponsor or?
Provide financial and logistical support.
I think it's too significant, support, leave that up to the city, right?
Got on the back, if you're right, please, I'm happy.
So under the Hazard Mitigation Plan Corporation at the bottom, incorporate the county hazard plan in the city of Trinidad annex. Are we talking about the city of Trinidad annex?
Because, so that's what they call, so if you look at the Humboldt County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which they're currently updating, supposed to be currently updating, there's an annex for each city. And some of those service districts too, maybe. So they call them annexes instead of appendice, they're like appendices.
Do we call the building down the street the annex? Okay, that's what.
I don't know why I say 8.4.
Was that correct? I missed that.
I don't see why programs save point, 8.4, 1.1 needs to be in there, that's just something we need to do and it's not.
Right. And so things, applies, not to jump too far ahead, but some of those access egress issues as well. 8.10, 6.8, 8.10.
Oh, okay, there's a difference, though, in that that needs to be done before we adopt the safety element. So that would be done by the time we actually.
Yeah, it is. You don't just eliminate things that need to be done, or that will be done.
Yeah.
Yes, and the rest of the pages for anybody.
What's left, this is public comments taken care of.
Nobody in the room. Tori with the way from the, I told you I was going to talk about noise, but it occurred to me that I did mention something which was, is there like citizen science or crowdsourced monitoring of noise? I mean, there's like crowdsources and science monitoring of air quality and temperature, if they're like, does that sort of resource exist already of overthinking the need to actually monitor cells?
Are we moving on from this?
So that I went back.
Did you have more?
Well, we have some more pages.
Yeah, no, I asked if there was more, if you've got more. Yeah, no, I I asked if there was more, if you've got more, then let's do it.
Yeah, yeah, just just quick things, like a, page twenty five, she's talking about emergency power supplies at the end. Uh, they talk about of power generators, we should prioritize renewable energy systems where feasible, and I'm going. Do we get that involved and things? This seems like an afterthought, but.
Wait, which which one, sorry?
Okay, eight point six. Eight point six, the last, and we should prioritize renewable energy where feasible. Why do we have any business prioritizing how people get their emergency power? That seems like a political comment, to me.
Uh, well, no, well, I think that means like specific to like Trinidad Town Hall has solar with a battery storage.
Yeah, that's nice, though. We're talking about prioritizing, uh.
Well, I think it's more, maybe it's prioritizing, um, well, I think, okay.
I think it's enough to say that what emergency power supplies can include. Your power generators, battery storage, you know, you could.
I mean, it is a, but this is a political document, so there's a good statement.
I'd like to see us make it less political. Because there's, because there's another one in here, too, on the next page where we. Uh, talk about establishing network of equitable located resiliency centers, what does that equitably mean?
Well, the city is required to have, consider, um, equity and environmental justice in this. That is a state requirement.
And so that wording.
And, yeah, climate resiliency is also a state requirement. Now, maybe this isn't necessarily the place for it, but we do have to have the. Those things in our job.
Like, it's just like, it comes out of the blue in a document like this.
Does, does the city have anything preexisting, might be another question, you know, the state requirements, but does the city, has the council already weighed in and said that is our priority? If it is, then that language has already been decided for us, yeah, if the city leaders have already decided that, then. Have been decided, outside of our purview, right? If that's the direction of the council.
Yeah, and well. But if, but if it hasn't, then it should just be assumed that, you know, this now becomes a priority, or. The same council hasn't decided.
I saw one of those solar and batteries rather than a giant generator.
Well, I agree that that would be better, so I'm just saying. Does this document, uh, should we be promoting that in a document like this that's talking about safety? It's not talking about, you know, environmental justice and environmental issues.
It says, but we are helping some of that, though, right? By state law.
I stand that, something expected, I wonder why it's in a document like this. You know, it just kind of creeps in there. I didn't object to previously, we're talking, people getting better information.
Well, I mean, I think equitable, I think, you know, the the renewable energy that. I mean, I think the important part is to have emergency backup power, um, but equitability in terms of. You know, emergency operations centers or something, you know, you don't wanna leave.
But to say establish a network of, uh, of locate of. You know, local resiliencies, resilient centers, I mean, I don't have a problem with resilient. You know, you want these things in an area that doesn't have problems.
Yeah, but I think the idea is that, you know, historically, traditionally, centers have been located in. Areas of more privilege and left out people.
The commission, what the hell is that gonna do with us?
Well, the state saying we have to try and oppose it.
We'll submit, submit.
I guess, um.
No, okay, I I do have a question where we talk about large scale disaster proper preparation. And we talk about resiliency to meet city needs, uh, city responders and key ci- city staff. I mean, how many city staff even live in town? I don't know. Are they available in it?
Yeah, and that's why I think that li- that language is exactly important to have in here. Because the city has an obligation to ensure that there is enough redundancy, if people don't live in town, then who is the next tier? Who's the, who's the rest of the bench that can go to the water treatment plant, that can go to city hall, that can do those things?
Yeah, well, exactly.
I think that language is important to have in there.
I I think the language is important, too, it just might highlight that. It is kind of a situation, if everything, if everybody in the city is nowhere near the city, then what?
But I think that's where the redundancy and resiliency come in.
Yeah. Just sort of stands out, it's like, oh, key city staff. Okay, are they here?
It's not this size, everybody's key city staff, heck. They don't have the luxury of having non-essential cities.
Yeah, they're all essential, they get paid, so they better be. Everybody's important, no worries.
And no public comment on this one, so I think with this agenda item, we are done, then, Trevor, do you have what you need from us tonight?
No.
No?
I'm, oh, wait.
I said, do you have what you need from us for these agenda items?
Oh, any need, um.
Did you get what you needed tonight?
No, I think, uh, yeah, it sounds like the emergency responses is on the right track. I'm going to update, get some more information, noise element, um, I mean, it's a little bit of a reason, potentially. So, yeah.
Commissioner reports. I just had a question, is that even still necessary, since there are no committees for us to be on anymore?
I think it's always been on there, I mean, I guess you could, um. You know, we did, at at times, we've had a, like a rep to the city council. Um, you know, like missionary would go to the city council, made it into a report back. I mean, maybe you went to a community event.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, I think it's, it's fine.
Yeah, can include anything?
It can include anything, yeah, it doesn't have to be committees.
Cool, alright. And commissioners, have anything to report?
Well, Chris did his at the start, so.
Uh, staff report then, Trevor.
Um. Yeah, um. You know, I don't necessarily have a lot of things coming up that. I'm gonna, gonna necessarily have ready for a meeting, um, I'm working on the ADU ordinance, uh, you know, I'd like to have something on that as soon as I can. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, things like Humboldt Bay Water, um. An LCP update, but there's a lot of work to do on the ordinances, um. I'm gonna try and keep focusing on things that, you know, will come to you at meetings, because I don't wanna get too far behind and. Um, I do have one project coming up, maybe I mentioned it last time, that's the merger of two parcels, one's in the city and one's out. City, um. Just kind of an odd situation, but the the house is on the property outside this, it's a weird, it's a tiny little triangle, it's the only property in this area. On the west side of scenic, it's not in the city, I think it's a section and township line, that was the original city limit, so it's just this little triangle. Um, but the septic system was on the property itself, and she needs to repair her septic system and help. Or repair the septic system on a different property, but, um, so, anyway.
Half in the city and half in the county.
Half, yeah, and I think we're gonna let it remain that way, but we have to process CDP for merger and for the septic. It's a super limited, it's, it's a super limited property, because it's got a range of, we go around it and it's all steep slope.
Interesting, that company has lots of questions already.
Were you expecting any of this in months?
Um, probably not, I don't think we'll be ready for it in October.
So maybe.
Actually, I wanted to talk to you and see if you wanted to go out and look at the site from the geologics.
There's, give me the call. It'd be the first time I've been pulling this thing.
Everybody else is on last chance grid.
Yeah, and and I'm probably free. Maybe not, um, but, so if if there's nothing much come, is there any thought about having a meeting?
I mean, we could potentially not have meetings, I mean, I, we some, we often. You know, November, December meetings, we usually cancel one of those with the holidays, um, and things going along. I can't hate to cancel October, November and December. Because at some point, we're gonna get. Where we have a lot of stuff, so I would like to keep some things coming to you, um, but I, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily know. They'll all have things ready for October. So, I guess, um, you know, let me, let me know your schedules as soon as you can ahead of time in terms of particularly of November and December meetings.
Better ongoing trails related issues still? I mean, those, those will close some meetings, for sure.
Uh, I mean, I don't know how, if you've read the staff, if you read the coastal commissions, I mean, I think. We're a little bit upset at the coastal commission for throwing the city under the bus like they did.
We have.
Don't get that.
I'll follow up, I think, I don't know, we'll, we'll see, I met with Gabe and Cheryl today, talked a little bit about it, we're gonna meet with coastal. Next. I. Knows, I mean, that the coastal commission even read the city's response. No discussion.
Consent item, yeah, right?
Mm-hmm.
It was a consent item, right?
No, so, no, the consent item was the amendments.
Oh, just the amendments.
The, the, the housing related zoning ordinance amendments, uh. The, it it was a hearing, but I guess their normal procedure is. So their, their default is that an appeal has substantial issues, so the deterrent, so what they were deciding on was, does the appeal have substantial issue? Um, and their default position is yes, it does, and they don't take public, they, I, I thought. They might have discussed it among themselves at least, and asked questions, um, but apparently they don't even do that unless.
Fortunately for us, that's at the city council. Park late really well.
Yeah, that will be, that will be an ongoing thing, and and, you know, I think. I, I think there are some advantages in having the coastal commission have jurisdiction on that permit and help. And because they're not subject to CECL, they, you know, they can say, oh, hey, I don't think a biological report serves me, so they can kind of help streamline. Process of getting that. Three route open, so hopefully.
It sounds unlikely. They would streamline, I think.
No, they seem. They're successful.
Well, they have internally inconsistent goals.
Well, we're all the government.
Well, and I, it's, it's especially frustrating when, you know, just two years ago. They chastised the city for having been like closed over the objections of the art drive.
Future agenda items, anything on there, people wanna? Bring closer to the surface or remove or? Let's just kind of. No, nothing jumping out, alright.